My peep's in the corner over here. I got you.
Yeah. There'll be peep peep.
Peeps over here.
Hey.
She's not there.
Well, did you get coffee?
Yeah. Yeah, they're looking at it. They took it away. But I'll get it back. Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Oh, I made some of them. I washed them.
I said they're getting white with the recipe.
I mean, I washed some of them. They were good, but I've made that thing, the round thing, the first rose we ever made. I've made that. I've made the fudge. I've made the, um, with the cobblers. The cobbler that it's the roses from the bottom. No, no, just in the paint. I've made the one that you raffish it around, did a little business. I've made that one. And I've made the sausage and potato cream cheese. And I've made that one.
See, I can't make many of them. You're talking about everybody's daughter.
No, these are sweet, so I have to drop. Yeah, that fudge is a little good. It takes about ten minutes.
Is that the one that Paul?
The peanut butter fudge.
Oh, Paul, it's the one that Paul's eating. Yesterday, they poured.
I can't even tell you.
And it was, it was just plain they had marshmallows in it.
No.
And new, that sheet there, a new, um, now that's one that you got.
Oh, yeah.
But today it's done. So, because the one I gave y'all was, uh, last week. So I just want to have that day to do tonight. I might get all my thoughts on it once, too. I don't know, big ghost. I'm sorry.
I think it's been more than a minute.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find you.
These are all from the water. Yeah. She's always painting the queen that I didn't birthday. And pets on the staff and she's up in here. I want to actually talk to them.
Do you have any more?
My print.
Stephanie, we all want these.
All right, it's six oh one. Council members are present. We'll get started and we'll open up at the short part of prayer. Dear Lord, heaven, thank you so much for giving us this wonderful windy day. Lord, we continue to pray for rain. Would please be with us here at this meeting tonight. Scott and direct us in all that we may say and do. And help us always act in the best interest of the citizens and this city. In name of prayer. Amen. First item on the agenda is to approve the regular meeting minutes from the last meeting. Take your chance to be with those. And if there's not any corrections or any issues with those, I'd ask for a motion to be proven. As per the Michael McNeice motion, is there a second?
Second.
First seconds. All four? All opposed? If you care. Um, items number four and five, um, don't really have anything to talk about that at this time. So I just ask for a motion to table those two items. Michael McNeice motion, table items four and five. Is there a second? Uh, real seconds. All four. All opposed? Stephanie, did you vote?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, item number six, solid waste contract. Um, we've asked our city attorney, James Stephanie, to take a look at our current contract with, uh, Allied Waste and things like that. If you don't mind.
All right. Uh, everybody at the council table, you've got a copy of a couple of relevant pages from the camp, from the contract on, in front of you there. Full, I got a full copy, full copy of the contract. It's about thirty pages. And Sunny knows too if you want to read the whole thing, but if you need, if you need a way to go to sleep at night, it will certainly set you to sleep. Uh, the provisions that I've got in front of you, you'll notice the very first one, it says the term of the contract, where I've got highlighted at the bottom, the term was in two thousand and, I guess, nine, then, or ninety-seven, this contract was amended to state that it was, um, that the term of the contract would commence on October ten, two thousand and nine, and terminate October nine, two thousand and fourteen. So basically, the city hung out solid waste contract with Allied Waste through October of two thousand and fourteen. Now, if you'll turn to that second page, um, that's on your, on your sheet there, that's the, that's the relevant provision on the term of the original contract. That's what was amended. The original term was ninety-seven and ninety-eight, so that's basically been replaced by what I just told you, oh-nine to two thousand and fourteen. But note that it says this, however, subject to the terms provided in paragraph eight, city may terminate the service agreement by notifying contractor in writing thirty days or more before the effective date of the termination. Now, take a look at the last page, the eighth. That's the paragraph eight that's mentioned. And it basically says the city may be terminated, city may terminate this, um, contract upon the fall occurrences with thirty days' notice to the contractor. And then there's some other provisions that basically contractor breaches, if the city breaches, they've got the right to terminate. The way I interpret this contract is that city is under the contract until two thousand and fourteen, but during that term, you have the right to give them at least thirty days' notice and terminate this contract and rebid the, um, rebid solid waste contract with the city, eat these old shoes. Reason I bring this up is Sunny and I had talked about it. I know Allied has, uh, pushed, has requested another rate increase. And Sunny, in June and in July?
Yeah. And this twelve ninety-six is not right. That's the rate on the, when they-
At the time-
Did the amendment of which was not too long ago.
So what was the, what is the current rate and what will the rate be?
It's like fourteen ninety-six now is what the per resident month is. And it's fixing to go up, uh, sixty-seven cents for a fuel charge. Then it's going to go up another percentage amount, uh, per resident. And then it's also increases on the businesses as well, uh, for their annual upage.
And so basically where you're at is the city's fixing to either have to pass all some charges to the rate payer in the city or eat those charges in the city budget. And that's a policy decision that's for y'all to, for y'all to make, not for me. But, um, with Allied pushing these rates, um, these requested rate increases through, we've got that ability to terminate contracts. It's my advice that y'all should discuss this amongst yourselves and say, do we want to rebid this contract and see if A, Allied can give us a better deal if they're faced with a loss of a service in the contract? Or B, if there's somebody out here who can give us a, who can give us a better deal. You know, you may get situations, you may rebid it, and there's somebody out there who gives you a, a great deal that's great for the citizens. Or you may get it that it's not that many, uh, not that much of a saving, but you can at least investigate the possibility for your, for your taxpayers and for the city budget. So, uh, we have to give them at least thirty days' notice. I think you should give them, if y'all decide to do this, you should give them well, well in advance, thirty days, because it's going to take time for the city to rebid the contract aside someone else and, and, or, or Allied and then, you know, some, get somebody else in place with the, uh, with the new set of, um, with the new set of garbage, garbage cans within the city. So my advice to y'all would be, y'all talk about it. If y'all, if y'all would like to, give Allied a notice of termination and rebid this thing to see if there, you can get a better deal out of Allied or someone else, then we would need a motion, an approval, uh, from the council to basically instruct the city manager and the city attorney to enter into negotiations to terminate and or, and rebid this contract or, um, if y'all decide not doing it all. But that's the information. I mean, I'm willing to entertain any questions that y'all have, um, but that's, and so that's basically up for y'all to decide if y'all want to do something about this. But Sunny and I talked about it. We thought it would be good for council and the city to bring this to your attention.
So what, maybe a dollar, two dollars, raise?
What's the percentage?
Well, we are behind, as y'all, we discussed this before when we were doing budget. We're still behind in where the rates need to be because the rates were not ever adjusted from ninety-seven to now. When we went up a dollar, we're still two dollars behind. So what we make, uh, overage mountain is usually absorbed. When they come and dump another dumpster one time, it costs us fifty-something dollars and we have to pay that. Usually in the month that it goes, we collect somewhere around ten to twelve thousand and we pay out, pay out anywhere from eleven to fourteen thousand. Depends on how many of the, uh, roll-offs we have hauled off at the convenience center. Um, they gave us four and I think we broke even last month when they gave us four hauls for the year for free. Uh, they're fixing to go up on us again, which means we're that much more behind on where to, to break even.
What is that percentage amount that they're saying that they want to go up?
Um, they, they haven't sent that part of it yet. It just will be due in July. They will send us that deal in July. They haven't set price on that. Their fuel increase is sixty-seven cents. That's their fuel increase.
Which is affecting the street, right?
That they, they, yeah, they'll go up on that in June.
So we should have all the thing of how much is going to go up on everything by June to vote on it then?
Right.
Have we pointed in?
How much we can do until we don't have one?
Yeah, I mean-
Well, there's lots of options that we can do, uh, depending on the price change. Um, when you use the one and a half yard containers in the alleys, then you have to do the percentage up so you can upkeep the alleys. We're not making enough to upkeep the alleys, so our alleys are failing. Um, but that's where you have to increase that, uh, the revenue part of that. You can change and go to the ninety-five gallon rollouts on the road. It decreases the amount of, of what the city is responsible to pay that, and there will be no increase to the residents whatsoever. They're cheaper anyway. You know, uh, and actually, we wouldn't have to go up for two years. So our rates would stay exactly the same.
Yeah, but you've got too many, you've got too many older people that can't roll them out there to-
Well, that's, that's part of, um-
And the wind, the way the wind blows around here, if they're not full, they're going to blow over.
Part of the, of the contract is that, is what's called, uh, personal, uh, abilities to help them, which means everyone that is not able to push that cart out on the trash day, uh, there's a list. And so usually the trash company guy will do that. That's part of the contract. Or it's contracted to less amount that the, you know, the city would go pull them out for them and then place them back.
Definitely what I would say there is, that's a, that's a valid, very valid concern in all small towns out here. When you come to the rebid process, that's something you choose to do, they're all going to come in here and give you the presentation, the song and answer team. And you ask every one of them, say, hey, I've got the, I've got the folk, the older folks who can't go, can't roll that out. What are y'all going to do about it? So that's something that you would ask each of them to address individually and then choose who, which one can do it.
Right, yeah. Because, I mean, like with their trash, you know, bless their hearts, they probably don't have three or four little sacks and, you know, the way the wind blows around here, it's going to blow them over and you're going to have trash everywhere.
And that's why, and so you ask them, say, under, under our circumstances and our demographics, what is the best set of containers that you can give us that, um, help our citizens the best?
Yeah.
Regarding the rate increase, you know, we don't know what it's going to be in July. In my personal opinion, Allied is historically too high as it is. And with that rate increase, we don't know what it, we don't know what it's going to be. But basically, you're going from too high to more too high. So I think you're already too high with them.
But if we go in and maybe negotiate with them, tell them we're going to terminate them, you know, they might work with us a little bit better on apps instead of having to redo all of, everything.
At the very least, I think you could at least get some concessions out of Allied to try to-
Exactly, yeah.
Try to knock the price down a little bit. Make them watch your pad.
And that's what I would think that we'd at least negotiate with them. Maybe even get some more prices, but negotiate with them too again and tell them-
Allied is the only solid waste management company that charges the fuel charge as well. Most, all the other stuff.
Right. They build it in with their, with their other costs and-
Like, yeah, they just hit it.
They get it, but they also have a, one thing y'all should keep in mind, some of them also have lower, have, have lower overhead and they're not charging the same amount, um, for overhead charges that Allied charges. Uh, seeing in other cities that either Allied is a current, is a, um, is the current waste provider, uh, waste disposal provider, or was the former waste disposal provider and is no longer there, historically, it costs more to them because of their overhead and because of the, because of the various factors associated with the various companies in this part of the world.
Where does another, I mean, just for instance, one of these, where do they come from? One of the ones that y'all are looking at?
There's, uh, one in, what they call cap rock. Some of them, you know, for some of this done, you always have to look at some prices. Um, most all over the world, we're paying fourteen ninety-six to Allied. Most of their prices are anywhere from eleven fifty to thirteen dollars. So they're, they're still cheaper than all the pays.
How do they pretty much do five to seven percent increase every year?
Yes.
And not randomly?
And you also, um, and I will warn you this because they've done this before, is if you come to them, say, hey, we're fixing to terminate the contract, they say, well, hold on, we're going to postpone, uh, we're going to postpone this fuel increase. We won't do it this year, we'll forego it. Well, in other cities, they did that. And then the next year, they tried, they did-
Tried to double it.
They tried to double it. And we called them and said, yeah, no. Just put-
Yeah, they did that to us a couple of years ago. Right.
They did, yeah.
They're notorious about that.
They, they turned around and gave us a hidden charge and then next year bumped us up an extra.
Yeah, they did do that one time.
And your, and your other, your other option is probably be, is they typically bid all these when we knocks waste out of Abilene Ty who has the contract for, for Stanford and several others. And I say typically, their overhead, based on what I know, their overhead is lower than Allied's. So they're probably going, I don't know what the current rate is, but if I was a gambling man, I would bet that their, their price they would offer, y'all would be cheaper.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's kind of hard to look into, like you said, to negotiate with them and then look into another. And they know that we're negotiating with somebody else, they might, but we don't want it to hit us next year though either. So, but like you said, though, we have the thirty days that we can terminate it in time.
Yeah. So what we did-
What we did last year when we did, did pass the ordinance for the rate increase is that, you know, we discussed, there has not been a rate increase for seven years.
Right.
You can't just put that rate increase where it needs to be all at one time. So we did the dollar, but you're looking at next year in the budget, it's going to have to be a dollar or more.
And you're talking about, you're talking about the rate that the city charges the rate type of customer, right?
Right. They're going up on us, you know, over a dollar, uh, going to be over a dollar, so we have to match that and then some in order to get that extra to take care of when we have to dump one extra. Or, you know, when we, now, they set a different deal. Like, we go get the dumpsters and we set one at the courthouse for some kind of something at the square.
Right.
They allow us to give us that. But if it was for anybody else, then you're looking at, at least a point, we'll get the sales charge as if they only dumped it one time. Uh, so if you set three, that charge plus, and then depending on whether it's a one and a half or a three yard dumpster, they will get their money out of it just simply because it's a new dumpster.
Right.
So even though we may have an extra laying around somewhere, we don't have to pay for it then, we will if we ever move it from that spot.
Well, like I said, I, I, I mean, I think that, like you said, like he said, that, you know, to look around and to make sure they know that we're in negotiations and if they want to do a different, you know, separate bid and, you know.
Well, the process of that, we would have to put a, a bill in the newspaper that we would actually, of course, inform Allied that we're going to do that.
Right.
A, a notice in the newspaper that we are going to start taking bids on. That has to run for X amount of days. And, uh, of course, Jay's out now, so we're going to have to go with Hamlin's newspaper and turn that in and do those steps first before we do anything.
Do you have to do those steps just to research what to bid?
No, I- No, no, that's, that's for the actual rebidding.
Okay.
Here, here's what I would suggest in a perfect world, um, I mean, if, if y'all wanted to explore this, what I would say is, y'all, uh, council gives a motion to authorize city manager, city administrator and the city attorney to give Allied notice of termination effective, because I want to make sure we've got plenty of time, effective, say, October or something, that way there's plenty of, plenty of leeway to work with to do that and to give that notice. Let's go notice, let's give a notice to Allied, see how they respond. Allied may come back and say, you know, basically say, you know, let us keep it, you know, we'll give you, we'll do this, this and this. Then at that, at that point, we may be able to bring a proposal back to the city council at the May meeting and say, hey, Allied has said if we don't terminate the contract, they'll, they'll give us, you know, this revised contract. And y'all come back and say, hey, that's great, or it's not good enough. So then it may be in May, y'all decide at that point to rebid the thing completely, start over. Uh, so we don't need a motion to do, to rebid, do public notice, I think, right now. My opinion, you just need a, need a motion to instruct Sunny and I to, and the mayor to negotiate or to give the notice of termination and make contact with Allied about that.
Is there any further discussion? Sunny, I'd like to make that motion.
I'll make the motion. They allow city attorney and Sunny to do it. They want to do it. Alan.
Is there a second? All second. All four? All opposed? Motion to adjourn. Next item on the agenda, AJ.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, thank you all for allowing me to be with you tonight. Hi. We had, um, learned unofficially, we'll start out with our home grant. I'll kind of go through all of our, where we are in all of our processes on the grants that y'all are interested in. First of all, let's start with the twenty-twelve grant that we're working on, where we're trying to replace the high pressure pumps and the areas that's over there on the highway, you know, where you can see the pipes and the water at any given time that we've been trying to work with on the, on the highway on three eighty. We're still in the environmental process. I know Gerald is designing this project and that, uh, we have, are waiting on word from, um, the UCIS in THC. We verify it, Texas Historical Commission, plus the Corps of Engineers. And Gerald was well, good enough to get all this information together for us so we could provide it to them. And I, they're giving us a letter where we can use an actual permit.
Already got the Corps of Engineers, they wiped it out.
Right. So we got that. So it's, it's basically, we're waiting to hear from the Texas Historical Commission. Um, we also had to contact, uh, the city of Hamlin, who owns the Hamlin Airport, as y'all know, municipal airport. Haskell. Right, I'll, I'll get it together and then Haskell, excuse me. Hamlin, I'm working on something else, that's the problem. Okay, Haskell. And invested with Haskell about that. And they had talked to the, um, to the FAA. They were getting some information for us. But primarily, what the city of, of Haskell were saying was that they were not going to expand their runway over into those areas where the, the ground storage tanks are. Because you know, there's three of them there besides, or there's two others beside y'all's property, so we're doing that. So we expect the environmental to be clear by about June the first. If Gerald, depending on them being able to get their plans and specs down at DCQ. And I think that's where we are on that with Gerald and him. I know they've been working on it. So that's the progress of what we've been making on those. The other one that we had been looking at and had made submission to was a home application, which was the, uh, we, uh, would be reconstructing homeowners' homes that had fallen below standards that met in, in coming up. And we, and the city had received notice that they could take part in what's called the reservation system on the home grant. Amongst us in September, HUD had found that TDHCA had not been in compliance in procurement to the effect that anyone that helps a city or an entity, county entity, prepare an application is considered an agent of the city or the county and therefore would not be eligible to help participate in the implementation and the carrying out the grant work done on that particular grant. They had one workshop that was in September that we were not notified of and all. So when these went through and they started going through y'all's applications at TDHCA, they called. Okay, okay. And so the, the choices that our cities and counties have taken is that, um, they would like for me to have the opportunity to participate in the grant process and be selected to do it. They're not, y'all are not obligated to. And I think y'all, I've always tried to tell you upfront, even though we do work for y'all, that does not obligate you to us. You know, we have to earn that right and that trust to be able to do that and present ourselves to you to do it. But what, uh, some of them are doing is just not turning that, returning that grant application or the contract back in because there will be funding available in August. The only thing is that the city would have to fill out that application themselves. We cannot help with it. The other, the other good thing is, is that we've already done it once for you.
So we have to, what?
Yeah. And it's been that, you know, you know, we just, and, and not to put y'all, uh, you know, fine about it, or to Tammy or to Sunny about putting it together. Uh, what TDHCA, much different than TDA is, uh, they want to make sure you get the money. And they want you to make sure that you're feeling comfortable and who's administering it to you and for you. So when you have, if you have something that you need to change or deficiency on, on the home application or housing application, they call you and say, you just need to get this to us. They don't just automatically disqualify you and, you know, say, you, sorry, we hope you can come back next year. They want to work to make sure you get it. So I think with what the template that you have, it will be very easy, other than passing a new resolution, you know, it'd be very easy just to, just submit it, just like it's what we did.
So then we have it in August?
They are going to notify us of the funding. And we at least, we can do y'all that. They consider that I had insider information, that's what HUD told me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But you can notify us when it needs, when you get it filled out and get it turned in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we can do that. And, um, the other thing is, is on even procurement of professional services thereafter, we can't participate in that like Tammy would help you before. So what we are doing is allowing you all to look at the template that, that the Texas Department of Agriculture uses for their federal programs. And all you're doing is changing out the agency's name. And then you'll have a, a template and, because Tammy's just got through doing that for the twenty-twelve grant. She's going to have a template and I'll give it to her tonight and that's what she follows. You know, and so if they ask, that's what she does. But that, but that way, it, it removes any, uh, it allows y'all to be at arm's length. There's no question about what y'all have decided to do or not to do. And that, and that's fine with us as long as we know it upfront.
And then you can still-
I can still-
Take the applications and score them and all that?
No, I can't even.
No, she can't do that.
And she, you can hire me after you, I can't do the application for you for the funding. I can't help you with preparing any information for securing grant administration.
No, I'm not after that.
Oh, afterwards.
When the residents apply, you take it and score it and-
Yeah, we still do all of that for you. And we go back through that, you know, as a presentation in our, our rep- a presentation in our, our proposal to you, this is what we want to do, to be turnkey from start to finish, so that once, let's say we have the application period for the homeowners to come in and see if they qualify, we qualify all of them, make sure they're eligible, and every fact that, then we bring to you all our top ten, or top twelve, top six, however many we have, and say, these people are eligible, these are the ones that we're going to move forward on, and, and then we give your blessing to that. When we go out for construction, once that construction bids have come in, the council has to approve those construction projects. So you have input, but you're still at arm's length at running it, so that's the way that is.
Because we need to make sure we get that in.
Yes, I, I saw what you were saying there. The one thing is that you will be on the reservation system, which says we can do up to, that contract period, we can do up to twenty minutes. And I will tell you, since we've been able to do that, and Tammy, Texas, she's got twelve, Timo's got ten, we've got thirty-five applications deployed in Texas.
Yeah, we need to, like, we need to make sure we get that in.
You know, so the interest is there, you know.
Yes.
It's just a matter of when, and then once it gets rolling, we can move forward.
Good deal.
That's us falling on our sword in front of y'all tonight. I've already been out in the sewer plant, invested with Sunny about it when it, when we first found out about it, and I was probably a hot little leg. I was expecting finding here, but it was at the plant, and Tammy had to take me out to the plant, make sure I found my way out there. So we did that, so that, that's the way that is, and that's how it came.
Now we know, so we can move forward on that.
Yeah, that was the end. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that last year, y'all applied for a downtown revitalization grant, and we were trying to fix up some sidewalk for a really nice area, and you only missed out on the funding by just one letter from a, one of the businesses. If we'd had one more letter from a business, y'all would have been funded last year, but there's, there is time again, the deadline, it will be in July, and I'll be going to the workshop, May the tenth, in Austin, Texas, on it. It's four hundred and fifty thousand, none of the scoring criteria has changed. It could almost be the same application we have with Sunny's approval, if he's satisfied with everything, and then us, then us really going, 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 knocking on the graves and sisters and saying, this is what we're trying to do, we know there's lots of need to the community, and we're certainly not downplaying it, but this is one of the things that we can do to help improve our community and so forth and so on, so, you know, let y'all think about it, it wasn't necessarily for y'all to vote to do on the agenda tonight, but at least maybe it's your May meeting, and you can say, yes, can I go here and get started. The grant's for a hundred and fifty thousand, most of, the only thing that's really cash is the engineering fees, which is what we discussed with you earlier.
We were going to do a lot of that ourselves.
Uh-huh, then you were going to do the in-kind demolition.
We were going to do the, yeah, the in-kind demolition, so that was going to take up some of that money, the in-kind, you know, the money that we'd have to put out.
And I thought that, you know, just, just for y'all's information, and, and just with Sunny's permission, is to see if Gerald could look at it again from what we did last year, kind of give you a rough up figure of what it is, what the engineering fees are, you know, and, and see whether, whether y'all want to proceed with it. But you still have time, we have to do public hearings, you know, the same thing, to get it in. And then just selling it to the business community, making sure that they understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, if we just like one letter, surely we can get that one letter.
Well, we've got three new businesses now.
Yeah, that's what they have.
And that's what I thought that would be helpful, you know, and we just need to get at least fifty percent of the occupied ones, even if they're not directly affected, you know, within the area, in other words, they're right next door to the area, if they will support us on it.
Right.
Then we have a really good shot of getting one. And then you would know if you're sunny in about October, you can know that would work. So that's, on your twenty, there we go. Fourth thing, and then I won't take up any more of the term, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen grant that we're working on. It is in the stage now where they are, just letting us know if there's any deficiencies. As far as we know, if that's Vermont, I have not been asked for any. So we're thankful, we thankful for y'all, for the staff providing all the information we needed for that, so, so far, so good. We anticipate, we will hear something, the mayor should get a letter, Ralph, he should get, be getting a letter in about four weeks, and we should have a score and may, may get home to you.
Okay.
And see where we, where we land on that.
Are they still going to give us fifteen points?
That, I don't know. That's where, the fact that we got funded off this last one, it helps diminish our points. But what they're running into is disqualification. And they're running into people who have not conducted an audit within the last two years, and are not comfortable sortifying to the records in house if they are.
We're good at that, aren't we?
Financially, unable to do it. So we're going to have some cities that are going to be turning applications, they couldn't, based on audits, they couldn't do it. So hopefully Ralph, and he may hear something before I do, because T D A likes for the mayors to get the news first, or whatever. Now, questions, problems, I get those first, okay, but you'll get the good news, our quit is staying, you know, on it. And, and remember, it's thirteen, fourteen, so if the progress continues, y'all could be like you weren't this last time on eleven, twelve funding cycle, y'all were in the twenty twelve year, and they're being the twenty thirteen. So that's where we are on all the grants that I know that are available at this time.
Good deal.
Okay? Anything you need to add?
Well, I'm just going to kind of interject what she was talking about on the administrative part of that. The reason that she's here is so, because we did get the letter that we weren't funded, or the HUD deal, we didn't start taking applications and all that. What we discussed before when we got Kay to do this is it doesn't need to be in-house us, because that makes us pick the applications, makes us make the decisions, and we don't need to do that. So that was why I had her come and see if y'all would go ahead and just pass up this one, let's just repass it, and we can get her, or whoever y'all choose, it doesn't have to be Kay, but somebody else to do the administrative. And I've already looked into it, because I have to, to find an administrative to, that would handle the one we got now. There are really few, probably twenty.
Well, that's the qualifications, correct?
Most, most of them don't want to do it since Kay, they don't want to do that to Kay either.
Right.
So really, we have no one to, to do the administrative part, other than myself or one of y'all, our team.
And I can tell you, I mean, I, I worked on that energy grant that we got, it's in the window, the air conditioner, all that, and the year and a half of it. And I, that was my first time to deal with a grant, and if it hadn't been for Kay and them helping me, oh goodness of their heart, I wouldn't have got, we wouldn't have gotten our money back, because that, they're stuck on there, I had no idea what it was, I know nothing about the permit and all that. I mean, it was, it was tough, but we got our money. But if it hadn't have been for Kay, we, we might still be working on it, or it might not have been, you know, reimbursed.
So, so thank you, everybody, thank you.
And, and to answer to Sunny's questions, there's about six firms in the state of Texas that work in a home program. Most of them kept golfed out because it's become such a liability, because you're doing so much upfront, that you don't really know when you're going to get paid for them, because you're only paid for that bridge. We may look at twenty-five applications and only can qualify six, but we still have all the work for all nineteen of the others, but we, you don't get paid for those because they're not funded, if they're not, you know. And we understand that, that's, that's why we, why we do what we do. And that's why we try and work with the cities that are familiar with us, because of the cross-level, we try to understand that that's the way we want it, and, 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 like I said, hopefully we can present our qualifications to you, and y'all perhaps still be happy with us at that time.
Since we worked on it in two thousand and twelve, and we having a problem being funded for the next round, if we pass this one up and apply and all that?
No, there is no penalty for not doing it. In fact, the executive director of home says, you're okay. Sometimes people just don't ever turn these back in and acknowledge them until it goes away, that's why we put a timely, that'll, when you could reply back, because, oh, and not, and she said, and there's no penalty right now.
So we could still apply in August?
Yes.
I think, do we need to make that motion tonight?
No, I was, I was, I mean, Kay had said that, and we'll have to put that on the agenda the next time, to go over with that.
We can take that.
Or is that going to be under that?
We can take that.
It's a various grant.
A various grant.
Yeah, it's a various grant project.
Well, I, I do, I think, pass up this one and apply in August the right way, and get all that stuff done, and have Kay to do what she can do, whatever, yeah, like that. I think, yeah, I make the motion that we do that.
Stephanie has the motion, really seconds to pass on the two thousand and twelve home grant.
You're going to get her, and all the steps, we can just scan it.
All four? All opposed? Motion changed.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate y'all, everybody for having us, and you all, Sunny let me know, and you know, I think it's, it's what he's like, he's letting you guys breathe.
Next time, we'll probably like, Mr. Schill.
I'm sorry, well, actually, go ahead, go ahead.
Sure. Okay. I'll give that around. What's your proof?
From April until September.
Yep, two.
Yep, yeah, there'll be two budgets on that. It was approached, I guess it was around the first or second of April, by the ex-director of the chamber, John, that the mayor was going to withhold our hotel motel tax because of financial concerns. There, there was no request for financial records at any time by the council or the mayor prior to this. No request for our budget requests. You know, the chamber only works, our biggest deal is the hotel motel tax, that's the only way we can operate, other than, you know, donations, membership dues, and fundraisers, that's our, that's our biggest concern out there. The pur, really, the purpose for the chamber is to promote business and encourage tourism. The chamber's main operation budget comes from the hotel motel tax, and, yeah, if it's withheld, I mean, you won't have a chamber, you won't have any money to operate. Because our, if you look on the, I guess, the first page, which would be the, the first budget with for the Rockin' Red Fest, and then we get, Stephanie makes four hundred dollars a month for taxis, and if you break that down, it's like a dollar twenty-five an hour for all the work that she does, and all the hard work that she puts in to promote everything, trying to get things in the community. And with the hotel motel taxes, like, from April first to September thirty, it would be sixty-three hundred dollars, and our membership dues will be a thousand and fifty. Then we, a hundred and fifty dollars in donation, which brings it to seventy-five hundred dollars. And then below is all our expenses that we do for the flip shows and try to get stuff going in the community, then that'll bring it down. If we use all of that, it'll, total expense will be forty-one twenty-eight, and that leaves us a little bit if we need to do some, you know, try to do something in between. And on the next page, this is what, this is from the Rockin' Red Fest, what, what all we made and what we paid out. Total income for that was forty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. With, on, on all our expenses, it was, the total expense was forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars, that's with everything that we paid out. And without, you know, we got, if we can get the hotel motel tax, that'll really help us out, kind of get back on our feet, if, because it's a thousand and fifty-three dollars difference after we pay everything. And without, without getting the hotel motel tax, I mean, that's going to put us in the negative, where we can't operate and bring stuff to the town. And I guess, what is it, the third page, which has all our, all the events that we do throughout the year. And on the, the Rockin' Red Fest, we had, the chamber put a twenty-five hundred dollar deposit on, let's see, thirty-five hundred dollars, to get everything started on the Rockin' Red Fest. And with everything that we paid out, I mean, if you look at the town last weekend, we had roughly over a thousand people here, which brought business to the convenience stores, the hotels, the motels, the restaurants, and I think everybody had a good time, and I think they'll come back, but without a chamber to promote it, we can't do it. And, I mean, next year, we got very little help from the city, we got a little help from the city, but we're going to move it out to, out to the Double Mountain Motor Sports, where we have a bigger complex, and it'll, everything will be out there. Because out there, I mean, we had well over three hundred people out there. And out there at the arena, there was five hundred chairs set up, that was pretty much full, and there was at least another four or five hundred people standing around, so I mean, that's a lot of people spending money in the community. So, you know, hoping y'all will give us our tax money, that way we can continue to operate as the chamber, and not have to shut down. I think that's all I have.
I have one question, when you first started speaking, you said our ex-director.
Exactly, your director.
Exactly.
Exactly, my dad.
I, I just want to make sure. Okay.
It's abbreviated.
Yeah, you know.
I was planting out of that city X.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify that.
At this time, I don't have anything to add to it. From the city's standpoint, there are a lot of issues I think need to be resolved to get the city in compliance with the state tax code concerning hotel motel tax, and I'd like a little time to continue working on that, so I would ask for the council to table this issue for our next meeting.
Am I allowed to talk?
Sure.
Why? I mean, I've got all the paperwork right here, we're all of it, you know, what we do, you know, the, the bylaws, the officer, the officer, the secretary of state, what we've done with all that stuff and everything. I don't understand what we've done wrong. And I think we, I think I need my board, and I need an explanation of why we're not going to get our hotel motel tax. If we don't get it this month, I'll have to shut the doors, there's, you know, where I don't even get paid, and I don't understand that.
Hey, Stephanie, I actually, I, I actually made the recommendation to Ralph to table everything, basically from the standpoint, he said that, that the chamber board was bringing, bringing information regarding the budget to the council, and I said, that's good. I said, let's not make any rash decisions, one way or the other, let's not, let's not rock the boat, let's not change anything, let's let everybody have a little time to look at the, look at what they bring to the, to the council to review, everybody kind of think about it, chew on it, figure out what the best thing is for the count, for the city, what the best thing is for the chamber, and basically table it so we didn't make any hasty decisions.
It's plain and simple, it's right there, plain and simple, what we do. But to my, Rockin' Red Fest was a one thing only, it won't happen again. The other stuff come right straight out of my checkbook, that what I did last year from April to September is what Sunny told me I needed to do, to bring y'all the budget, to agree to take my budget and to vote on it like that, and that's what his Sunny told me to do. And I did that, and that comes straight out of the checkbook from last year's event, and how much we paid for, everything, and all that kind of stuff. There ain't no extra stuff now that the Rockin' Red Fest is over, it's paid for, basically, you know, we'll have a cake sale or something, make up for that thousand dollars that I did make a hole on it. But all that other stuff's plain and simple, from April to September, it's right there. But, I mean, you just as well shut the doors if you're not going to give me my money back.
No, I don't, I don't want, no, I'd ask Ralph and, I said, let's not withhold anything, let's not do anything, let's not do anything different, let's not, let's not withhold any money, let's not make any major decisions right now. No, I-
Because, I mean, all I use it for is the back page, that's all, of the, of the budget thing, that's all I use the money for. My philosophy in that, I'd love to put a little money in the bank every once in a while, but if I have a bingo and spend two hundred dollars on bingo, and I bring in two hundred, hey, I'm happy, because the community's happy for what they get to get out and do, because that's all my concern is, is for the community to have fun. You know, it's not for my benefit alone, I love my job, but, you know, like I said, I make four hundred dollars and I put in fifty, sixty hours a week sometimes doing it. You know? You know, and now, like I said, I, you know, I think, like I said, we deserve a break so for why, you know, he came to my office and told me he was gonna withhold my money.
Well, my advice would have been to Ralph was to table so we don't withhold. It's not, I don't want you to have to shut the doors next month. I don't want to withhold.
Well, the doors are gonna be shut at the end of this month because we have no money to operate.
The, as the council, when has the council been making, or when has the city, Tammy, when has the city made, um, payments to the, to the Chamber?
I pay, like, January, February, March is the first quarter. They have until the end of April to pay that. So far, I've had one lady that came in last Thursday with her check with the budget in. And so that money is there in our account. And of course, I, at the time, I, I, you know, I have to wait to know if I was able to, you know, write them a check. Usually, I wait three days after I collect the hotel motel tax. Just hard, make sure it gets in the bank, make sure everything, you know, check's clear, whatever. And then I issue them a check. Usually, Hickman's pays usually the third to fourth week of the month. I do have a problem with the Hunter's Roost right now. They still have not paid. They are, if they don't pay by the end of this month, we are two quarters behind them.
As we know, that's the long-term issue.
And then usual thing. Um, so, as soon as I'm told I can write the check to give to her, I will write the check for the six hundred and twenty-eight that I've gotten so far.
Six hundred and twenty dollars?
That's, that, so far, that's all about, that was from the budget in.
That's from the last quarter.
Yes. And she said she had not been busy. She said, please start sending people my way if anybody comes in, you know, for this concert and everything. Hickman's, uh, was supposedly full, she said. Um, so, but I haven't gotten his report yet.
So, my, um, my advice to Ralph in tabling it would be to basically continue the status quo, continue making, making distributions. And that's what Ralph and I talked about. I said, let's not make any decisions to withhold anything, let's not make any drastic decisions till everybody's had time to plan that. So, when I asked him to table it, my interpretation of that would be the status quo would continue.
You keep, go ahead and write the check, basically.
Yeah, the checks would be continued until the city decided what their long-term strategy wanted to be.
But what is, like, your specific compliance? What is, I mean, what is your concerns about it?
I'd like a little more time to review that.
Review what, though, Ralph? The tax code. It's all, all this stuff Norman Arnett, I've got paperwork where Norman Arnett did all that. I mean, I don't understand that.
What are your concerns about compliance?
Yeah, I don't understa-, I mean, I just don't understand what the compliance is. You know, that it was all voted on, which Ralph said they can't find any of the papers, but I've talked to Martha MacDowell, which was the ex-director and, um, other ladies and gentlemen that was here at, at time. When Tom Wong come to the Chamber, they come, he come to the city council meeting in ninety-eight, ninety-nine. And he asked, you know, for him to start collecting the hotel motel taxes. And then I've got the pa-, you know, some more paperwork and stuff where they come back and ask for it to be, you know, to establish the Chamber of Commerce. And that's why the money was gonna go there, you know, to fund the Chamber of Commerce. Because, I mean, it's, you don't get no money from that, really. You know, but, I mean, I don't understand the word compliance that we've, all of a sudden, we've fell under since we've had the Chamber. We didn't have no trouble with it. Now, all of a sudden, we've got problems with being in compliance. I don't know what I'm supposed to be in compli-, compliance if we don't.
And I'll, uh, this is something else Ralph and I discussed. And, and I don't, and mainly Ralph's standpoint as a new mayor, make sure he understands what the law is and make sure we're not doing anything that's gonna get anybody in trouble, either the city or the Chamber, you and me.
We ain't done nothing to get in trouble. And then this is going on since ninety-eight. All of a sudden, we're gonna be in trouble?
No, Ralph's, Ralph as a, as a new mayor and myself as a relatively new city attorney, a couple of years ago, is, is just to make sure that we know what needs to be done and make sure that we're doing it. It's not, it's not to say that things have been out of compliance before. Ralph just wants to understand what his responsibility is and make sure that-
All I have to do is ask John Dangos and he can, you know, understand it. Cause he's been doing it.
Can I, can I say? One of the things that we're out of compliance with is the budget issue.
Nobody asked me for one. And I've been on the Chamber for five years and we have never, ever accepted a budget from Martha MacDowell in here and had to accept it.
I understand. But what we used to do and what we have to do is two different things.
Well, I understand that. But all somebody had to done was come and ask me really nicely.
That's why I mentioned several months ago that the Chamber needed a budget. And you said you were working on it several months ago.
Yes.
What it falls into, the compliance issue now, is that the ci-, city is giving you hotel motel money, which according to ordinance goes there, there will always be a Chamber. The, the funds go to the Chamber. There's no other place for it to go.
It's our funds.
So, that, that part of it, it just gets to the point where the city now is misappropriating funds because we don't have a budget.
Well, all that done was ask me about it. Martha MacDowell never told me. And like I said, I've been on this council for five years and we have never, ever had to accept our budget.
And Stephanie, I will say from my standpoint as a city attorney, having the budget now, you know, I can say we have, what's been done or hasn't been done in the past is-
Right. And I understand that.
But having a budget now does make me feel a lot better.
Yes.
You did say what? You said something about papers that were done by Norman Arnett. What are you, what are you talking about? Just on, just from my own knowledge. And Norman Arnett was a very capable attorney. I've seen a lot of his stuff. So, I would not-
Right, right.
I would defer to him on a lot of things. Does it count the Chamber bylaws and that sort of stuff?
It says, it has been our pleasure to provide some reference articles of incorporation that created the corp-, you know, the, the city council and stuff like that. You're welcome to look at all these.
You can make me a copy of that, just to think back.
Yeah, you're, you mean, you're welcome to all these, yeah.
Excellent.
And I'll make copies of all of it, yes. But, I mean, I, like I said, you know, all of a sudden, and like I said, all I had, and I did, you know, I told you I was working on it. And I did get busy and I didn't, but that's all I was at, you know, needed to ask if I, do you have for me to do a budget. You know, after I learned how to do one, Tammy had, she come and helped me, set me up and, you know, work, what, how to do everything. That's, that's all that had been done was asked.
Well, having, having the budget and having me get those documents, me make everything, take a look, make sure everything's paid. I would say from my standpoint, that makes me feel a whole, a whole lot better. And that's why, again, I don't wanna change, I don't wanna rock the boat and change the status quo until we've had time to look at everything. When they look at everything, council, mayor, everybody may say, hey, everything's fine. But basically, it's all-
It's super strict as we still have to have budgets.
Well, I don't mind looking at it. But all I done was just ask me.
So, going forward, that's not the issue to be in compliance, in compliance to do a budget. That's not your issue.
No, it's not a bu-, it's not any at all.
When is the, when is the Chamber's fiscal year? Is it match the city?
Your audit's done at the same time as ours.
We don't have to, I mean, we haven't had an audit yet. We're gonna have one next year. Becky's gonna put that on her thing, whatever. Yes.
My take is, as a compliance, you know, let's, let's talk about that, you and me, make sure that whatever the Chamber's fiscal year is set to match the city's. Are y'all September to?
Yeah, that's why.
October to September.
She told me to do April to September. That's what he told me to do.
That's the only reason why we did this.
And then I'll start working on the new one. That is not a problem at, at all.
Well, I think with a little bit of work and stuff, we can get, get, we can correct some of these issues without any, without any major issue.
Well, I didn't know, I honestly, I didn't know we had issues. Because I use the money for exactly what the bylaws tell me I can use the money for. And that's about tourism, bringing stuff into town, you know, it's, you know, like, all that kinda stuff.
Sure.
And that's all I do. You know, there's probably other things that I even could do with it, but I haven't gotten past that. And, you know, this is just my second year.
Right, right.
You know, but, you know, all I do is wanna do, want to do is for the community. And there's no hidden, nothing hidden or secret about any of it.
And, and that's why I wanted to table it. But I didn't wanna, didn't wanna change anything. I just wanted basically everybody to kinda sit here, get a, make sure everybody had time to go through all the paperwork and then let's talk about it at a later time, once we've had the chance to look at everything. So, I don't-
We've had that check for only three days. So, is it a problem if you don't have the check?
No, I just waited because I was told not to be issued till we had the meeting and got everything done.
Well, I think we understand, and you guys helped me, that to be in compliance, most likely looks like we need a budget. We have a budget, right?
Yes. And all, yeah.
I would say go ahead and pay it this quarter and then we have the next quarter, everything straightened out and amended and whatever you wanna do.
I think James is absolutely right. We table it and find out what the compliance issues are, if there are any, if there's any more than a budget, then we figure that out and we work it out together. But for now, we keep the status quo and let them have their money.
And I'd say, what do we do? Let's plan on just doing it to take effect of the next, of the next budget cycle. Cause trying to do a bunch of stuff for too much budget is not-
Right.
And then redo it all again for the next fiscal year is a hassle for you. That really doesn't, it really doesn't accomplish much of anything. So, basically, you and I have time to work between now and-
Yeah, I mean, I, and I'm being, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not, gonna repeat myself a little bit, but, I mean, I still don't understand the word compliance. But, you know, what, you know, that I'm in compliance, I didn't, I, I just don't understand now how I can be out of compliance with it, but I-
I think, I don't, and, and Ralph, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I think from compliance standpoint, just make sure the city and everybody is, um, city and everybody's doing, doing what the state-
Well, I understand that.
We just need to make sure we're doing whatever.
Well, I understand that. I understand that. But, I mean, we're not done nothing different, you know.
Right.
Like I said, is what the money's used for. I know what the money's used for.
Second. Three seconds? All four? All opposed?
All is for.
Do you have to obtain? The director's-
Abstain.
All right. Next item on the agenda, y'all should have a copy of a letter from the Public Utility Commission of Texas concerning musical telecommunications, Broadway, access line rates. They're notifying us that, um, according to Texas legislature, there's a one point zero six percent increase due to inflation on city preferred rates. On the back of that, your copy, on the second page, you should see the two thousand twelve rates and then the two thousand thirteen rates. If you correctly come wrong, that this is what the telephone companies pay us.
It's ours, yes. Uh, the French, it's, it's, it's the landline, it's the land线. That, that is the state, um, rate, base set rate. Do you want me to?
Well, I think normally in the past, we just accepted the rates that they proposed.
We don't, I don't know how to, you know, none of us, you, you have to go to a certain course to learn how to do it. Cause Roger and I had to do that. We went, we were totally lost. And, you know, Roger was very, very smart there. It's best, and we learned at that workshop, you, you accept their rates and it seems a whole lot easier on you, you know, because if you were to mess up on the rate, then, you know, you can-
If it goes over a certain amount, you have to have like a special lotion like you do with the other tax rate?
That's that kinda thing. So, normally, what we've done in the past, we accept their rates. That means you don't do anything with this. And then that way, you accept their rates. If you want to set your own rates, then we have to sign this and we have to put in there that we are going to do our rate at point, you know, blah, blah, blah.
This applies to landline only. Did they start adding that to cell phones?
It's seven cents more.
On residential, it's, uh, two cents. Um, yeah. And then on residential, it went from three eighty-eight to three ninety-three. Point to point, which I have no idea what point to point is, somebody else may know, was five eighty-four to five ninety-one. So, it's not, you know, that big of a jump. I mean, I know it's some, and we hate to see any kind of increases. But this is a yearly thing from the Public Utility Commission. And this is, that, basically, the same amount as what it went with last year. And therefore, they, they normally only go up just a few cents each time.
Oh, yeah, Washington's that, but really you can't argue with the union.
Uh, second act. Really makes a motion to accept the increased access line rates. Stephanie, second? All four? All opposed? Motion changed. Council's table. What did that council look at?
I wanted to tell y'all too, y'all, I mean, I've listed it number two, uh, bill. It was originally a hundred and twenty-six thirteen. This is a bill that when we switched over to our new company, um, APGNE, they failed to pick this one up, this account. And I called them on it and we had a few accounts that had a few cents that they had overcharged us at times or whatever. And we had to spend it. So, the original bill was one twenty-six thirteen. And I got them to take those credits off of this one. They brought it down to a hundred and nine oh nine. I mean, a hundred and eight oh nine, I'm sorry. And, uh, so, I will be issuing a new check because I just got the final word today that that's what they would do. And they're gonna send you a new deal and all. Um, so, there's a difference there on that.
That's a good difference.
Uh, we had several that had, you know, it, it just said credit on there. And so, I just, I called them three weeks ago and finally got word today that they would take them off.
What are we paying? Or what have we been paying? That we've got so many paint deals and rolling marting?
Or the deals at the wells, the cage around the wells, the convenience center, the trailer.
You weren't here last week, that's, I mean, but have you, that we had all that, you know, the bills and such, the pro-ones and stuff?
Yeah, we had a bunch of white paint. And it's, uh, paint that we used to paint the gates with at the wells is different than the paint we used to paint the convenience center. Cause we have to paint all those. So, that's what all that's for.
I just, like I said, I, like I said, you weren't here last time with, at the, you know, the bill of, you know, rolling's all the paint. And I didn't realize we were painting anything.
Some of the bills I've already had to go ahead and pay because of the paint. So, there's, uh, three separate stacks there. Um, but, uh, there's some new bills that have just recently come in that I, that did not get to be put on that. So, I just stuck them in there, um, on the top. Uh, you know, they're normal bills, the things that we already, y'all really already approved. So, it has to do with meters and all that kinda stuff. Yeah, I don't really look through them.
The other question I think you had last evening is, I like to speak as much as I can.
Other than my one?
Starter on the drug, that was.
No, I just asked about the paint, yeah, the paint, what we were painting.
Did that truck get it in front of the road to replace?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Michael makes a motion to pay the bills. Is he a second? Bill is second? All four? All opposed? Motion changed. Item number twelve is Sam Campbell.
Oh, boy, this is gonna take a while.
Uh, I'm, I won't go A, B, C, D. First, I'll address number B, which is Tex dot. The meter was down in a hole. It's hard to read. It's been misread quite a bit and then adjusted several times. We read it four times in one day and, uh, had two separate readings. Then finally, we pulled the meter out where we could actually get it to the point where we could really see it. And, uh, it's been misread. Uh, one number was read completely wrong and was read as an old style meter, read within the style it was. So, that made us overcharge Tex dot, uh, for those two, two consecutive months by a thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Normally, when we struck the check and gave them, or credited their account, they want a check. And so, before we write the check, send it. And I'll let y'all approve that. So. But the issue has been taken care of. There's not even an issue. It's got a brand new meter in it, which is a radio. We can't put too much radio in the meter in it. So, it was taken care of.
They call it every day and, you know, if they're gonna get your check. And we've tried to explain to them.
Do we need to make a motion for that? I make a motion when I make a check.
Going next motion, reimburse Tex dot. Two second? All four? All opposed?
And number C, wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we are applying for a grant, uh, which is two hundred, it's actually three hundred and something thousand. Total money's available will be two hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, we started this last year. It just takes a long time to get the grant stuff in process. If we got funded in two thousand thirteen, it would be four years before we would get the money. That's usually how long it takes. Just like this one has been a little bit more faster on the water deal. The wastewater we're looking at, uh, an amount of time that will cause us an issue with our current permit. Our current permit expires in March of next year. We have a hundred and eighty days to renew it. It takes at least that amount of time. So, we have to renew our original permit we have now so we can continue to function. Cause without it, we could not, you know, we'd be in violation to even do anything out there. So, we're, we'd have to renew our permit. We don't have an option not to. And it's about six grand to do that. Gerald's already started all the process, cause we have to turn all that in pretty quick. So, we will be within the hundred and eighty days, uh, to do that. We held off as long as we could in case we got the grant, our- Our, what it was basically is when we got this grant, when we started the amendment of this grant, we were gonna try to, uh, split it, half for water and half for wastewater. They didn't go for that. They did the whole thing for water. So we're having to actually find things to do to spend that, that two hundred and seventy thousand. And so, uh, the permit has to be renewed and, and that's every three year cycle that we're on in this water basin. So we may even have to renew it again before the grant stuff ever kicks in. But, um, he's already been doing, working on all that, um, part of it. Also, what Kay said about the grant deal is now we're waiting on them. We're not waiting on, uh, Gerald's already got the, the plans. Just putting a few numbers in that. Uh, so we'll be ready pretty quick on that part of it. So Kay, we're, we're waiting on Kay and the administrative thing now on that new water tower. We call it the water tower grant. That's not what it is. Uh, there's, there's been a whole lot of other things happen this week that, that, uh, I'll discuss after the other part of it. But the wastewater treatment plant permit has, you know, that's, that's one of the note reminders we have to do it. We can't, can't not redo it. So that's on that. Deal, that's wastewater plant. Now we're in the drought contingency part and everybody's really gonna love this. I have been on the phone with T C Q all day. Uh, today. The T C Q sent us a letter basically stating that, uh, they can at any time, uh, under their, uh, knowledge of the systems, set a, amount of water that each system can use, which they don't say Astromont, they, they, they're using North Central Texas because that is a reservoir of water. So, um, they're, they're sending us a letter stating that they're gonna jump into this and do their own figures and all that. Well, May fourteenth, North Central Texas has a meeting, uh, with their board. And they are ninety-nine point nine nine percent sure, positive, that we're going into another stage of, of the drought contingency.
Where's the meeting?
I've been, I don't understand, why isn't the other, like, Haskel and them in any kind of, they're not in it. I talked to Judge Ronnie Morehead and he says he's talked to the judges and other city council members and everything. And we're the only one that's in some kind of contingency.
They're supposed to be. That, that's the issue with them and that's them to.
Well, I understand that, but, yeah.
All I wanna do is to make sure, because if we, if we forfeit in our agreement to North Central Texas, they can limit us to a whole lot more than they're doing now. Plus, with no one's fault on this, at this table, we are in violation with them already and they're just not pushing that point. So, you know, try to keep them as happy as we can to get what water we do to mix with ours.
Stephanie, I disagree. I talked to somebody from the Haskel City Council and they are in the budget.
But they wasn't last week and I talked to Ronnie, he talked to him. And he, I mean, he told me that, you know, he didn't understand completely why we was and every, you know, nobody else was, you know, so.
I can't remember if they're under the same plan that we are.
What North Central Texas has decided to do, which I get, I gave y'all, uh, a list of numbers and then I gave y'all a back sheet, which is actually the enforcement part that they can go into. Uh, we're gonna try to stay out of the enforcement part, uh, as best that we can. I, I think there's gonna be times that we're, we're, we're gonna fall a little out of that and we will, it will cost us. The only numbers that I have to share with y'all are gonna, according to this list. I can do January, February, but those are false numbers on this deal because of last year. But March is, is pretty close. If y'all look at March, what they've done is they've been, every year for the past five years, and seen how much water we bought from them for that five years. Then they divided that out, took twenty-five percent off of that and that's that number over here, the one seven seven six three zero zero. That is the amount of water if, uh, if they would have passed and, and put us into the new stage. That would have been all the water we could have purchased from them without an enforcement charge for the month of March. For the month of March, we purchased two million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons of water. So we would have had, we would have been in enforcement and that would have cost us three times the amount of what we're paying now. That's their enforcement deal. Uh, we did a fifty-four percent mix of water is what we did last month for March. Which made, we, we bought two million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand from our wells. To mix with that, keep our nitrates down, we pumped in one million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand gallons. Now, I can change the percentage right now because of the nitrate levels. I can do with the one point seven million, I can mix one point nine million with it, which gives us a total production water of three point seven million gallons. That's it. Before we start boosting our nitrates to, to a problem. Now, we have been approved to set up a chlorinator system here in town with T C Q. Uh, once we install that, then our nitrate level coming from the well field to town will not increase as much because we won't be having to chlorinate it so high to get it here. For March, the consumption of water that we did was four point two million gallons. So we're about six hundred thousand gallons over of what we're supposed to do. Uh, we're gonna have to address this. Uh, they will put us in this contingency, May fourteenth or May fifteenth. I'll get the letter. It will be hand delivered. I have to sign for it. So I went ahead and we pulled all of the billing registers for last month and this is something that y'all are gonna find amazing. We have six hundred and ninety-five meter connections. That's it. The city itself, uh, has five hundred and seventy-three. We have forty outside of city that we actually take care of. Out of six hundred and ninety-five meters, we had twenty-five individual meter count. Twenty-five use over seven thousand gallons. We have seventy-seven plus, you gotta count, Tri-Tri, Swenson, all those. We have about eighty-seven business accounts. And out of those business accounts, including Tri-Tri and Swenson, we had eleven of those go over seven thousand gallons. So we're doing our part in conserving water extremely well, to the point of, when our budget was figured, we budgeted per meter of nine thousand gallons per meter. We're still using twenty-five percent less than that, uh, but it's not enough. We're still using way too much water. From twenty-five percent more of a cut, that puts us down, and the reason I gave you those numbers is just because of twenty-five percent more reduction puts our meter allocation at sixty-seven fifty, which is right at what average household use is using. I say average, if you look at it, is, is about thirty-five hundred for everybody in town. Uh, out of all those meters, I counted every one and I have the billing stuff in there and that's all we had to go over. Uh, if you take your Tri-Tries and your Swensons and you do their meter counts, they're way under. They're under seven thousand per meter connection as well. Uh, there's a couple that's not, that have some issues. The thing is, is our drought contingency plan is very vague on some of the stuff that we wanna do that can help to reduce the amount. It's very straightforward on some parts. We can take and try to have a special meeting and redo our budget plan according to T C Q's, um, some of their figures that are not so stringent as what we have. We're gonna have to reduce our businesses. We gave every business thirty thousand as to be fair. The new thing now that's come up with is you take the usage for the last twelve months, you divide it out. They are eligible to get seventy-five percent of that. That's how you do a business. So you don't, uh, cut your hotels and your motels and your restaurants to make them have even a deeper cut in servicing people. Cause you still want the people to come to town. Uh, that might be something, that is not in our drought contingency plan, but it's something we can add to that, which is probably not a bad idea. When we go into stage four of the drought contingency plan, there is no watering grass, not even with a permanent watering system. You have to do it by hand and it has to be between six A M. and ten A M. Or between, you only have two hours now to do those things. That's part of the plan. A, a permanent watering system or any thing other than a positive shut-off deal is supposed to be a violation of your drought contingency plan. No car washing other than the commercial car wash can be done. No, there, there's a whole list of things that changes. Everything in stage one, stage two, and stage three is still in effect. Now, stage four just increases. It cuts your times to do it. It cuts out all car washing, even on the days that you're supposed to water. You can't even wash your car. Those are the things that we're supposed to do. I've been all day trying to figure out something we can do to keep from having to do anything different. So, uh, there's some other options that we can look at concerning our drought contingency plan. The state is going to make us do this. Uh, and so I started today, is according to T C Q, there is an offer for under Astromont. I talked to our water well, um, experts here. The, what, there's water here, probably more closer to the river. Uh, so we're getting a sample of it on the first. We're gonna take it and have it tested, cause it's very brackish. So we may have to look into that alternative. The reason we're not looking into our well field to do that is, uh, an example is, is you got a five gallon bucket and you got four hoses in it. If you put another hose in it, you still got five gallons of water. That's all we got. Um, if Miller Creek gets, continues to go lower and over lower, they're going to be drilling wells in the Seymour Opera. They will pull water from us. We will eventually be buying well water from them if that's the point that we get to. Because our wells will go dry, cause we're on the upper end of that opera. So looking into different places to get water is an option that's just very expensive. So, um, the thing we're not gonna have to do is get into a pilot study for, uh, reducing the nitrates because there's two engineering firms that are doing that now. They have the same nitrate problems that we have. So we can use their pilot study, which is about fifty grand. Uh, so that'll eliminate that price. But there is a machine that you can buy now that is, uh, got media plus electricity and it takes the nitrate level out of the well water. And, uh, you can mix any percentage rate you need to keep your nitrates at a legal level. Now, without the funding to be able to do that, emergency deal, we're gonna be stuck with high nitrate level water if Miller Creek goes dry. Uh, when they cut us off, or to the point where it does not, does miss, they're gonna cut us off. They're gonna allocate us enough to where it's not gonna be any use, uh, for us to use it for the purposes that we use it for. When it gets to that point, we cannot stop water flowing. We still gonna have to have water. It's gonna be high nitrates. At that point, T C Q will not give us a, will still be out of compliance, but they won't go into enforcement from what I understood. They're gonna be lenient into that point, but the city will have to take actions at that time to either purchase an R O plant and supply those that needed the low nitrate water or we will have to purchase bottled water, I'm sure, just like we did before. These are the things they're gonna make us, we have no choice in, other than to comply with what they're saying. And I've talked to, uh, I'll say Austin's already called me twice. Uh, yesterday, they called me three times yesterday, waiting on replies back. They had a big meeting today and I won't know anything about it until they feel like they need to call and tell me what took place. Um, I talked to the lady in San Angelo. Um, they're doing the same thing to try to help find funding. Now, the city of Astromont won't necessarily get the funding. The funding would be given to people like O Glory, uh, Plainview and Tri-Tri. But it could help us be able to establish another working well or, uh, have funds to do the, you know, the, lower the nitrates stuff. Other than that, we are not eligible at this time for any emergency funds to drill wells or any of that yet. T C Q is gonna hold off on a lot of things until after today. And, uh, T C Q has to approve David's, um, contingency plan for the drought stuff. If they don't like it, they'll make it worse and then they'll lower all the amounts that, so they like the numbers rather than how David come up with it. That's where we are and we're gonna have to do something. We don't have to do it until May fourteenth, but May fourteenth, I'm sure, if it don't rain, we will be put in a different stage, which makes us have to go to stage four. And I, I don't know why Haskel and them are not doing it. Uh, according to David, everybody is doing it and everybody is doing, doing okay. We're doing really well. But with this next deal, it still puts us down. I mean, I thought we were doing, we're doing twenty-five percent reduction like they asked us to do. And with these new figures, even doing a twenty-five percent more reduction on, of that deal, we're still gonna use too much water. And we're trying it and we're, and I've already had a meeting with the, the other operators. Is this will be a day-to-day basis on how much water per day we can get from, uh, Miller Creek. Before, we could use eighty-six thousand a day. Now, it's gonna be closer to fifty thousand a day. That's all we can get from there. So that increases or decreases the mix, which in turn raises our nitrates. So we will have to start on putting the new chlorinating system in, uh, because heat is what affects the chlorine and it affects the nitrate levels, cause you have nitrification happening. And with the galvanite storage tanks that we have, heat is a big issue. Um, so that's kinda where. I know I covered a whole bunch of stuff.
If there's any way, you know, you said, we don't have the money, but, you know, there's like two or three water well places around here. If we took like bids on it though, where we could see, you know, where we're at there about drilling.
Well, and we. One company here in town said they drilled them like free.
They did, you know, to see if we could find water.
That's not the problem. The problem is getting the water.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's true too.
Drilling the well, yeah, they can drill it. The problem is, is T C Q has to approve it for us to use it.
Well, they're T C Q approved, don't they?
I, yeah, I don't know. All I know is, there's, there's certain ways you have to drill the well. And you as an individual can have a, a ninety-foot well drill for, you know, seven thousand dollars.
Right.
It costs the city a hundred and fifty.
Yeah. But I think like I said, they're T C Q, they put all their.
They build for cities.
Which, which ones are they selling?
I think it's English is on it.
E and C.
Yeah, E and C, but they've got licenses and stuff to do that.
They have a water well drilling.
I mean, I don't know, but the boys have the right license.
They, they, they drill one way.
They actually drilled Dickens the day, Mullins and Sons did, right in the middle of Dickens, Texas, right by the courthouse.
For the city?
For the city, yeah.
Do they have an opera?
Okay.
They have an, they have.
They have a really good, it's just dry.
And I mean, they were right there at Mullins and Sons was. I, like I said, I knew that E and C did. I don't know what, you know, the, the boys, what license they have, but they were right in the middle of Dickens, Texas, right, you know, by the courthouse.
Do you know, do you know, do you know the location of our place?
No, but I'll find out.
You know, what license they need and stuff. I mean, because instead of getting Leonard's way out of Abbling, we have two local ones that can do it easily.
Leonard's hired.
Yeah, Leonard's is the highest one.
It's not the water well. It's not the water well person.
What it takes for them to be able to do it.
Yes, I'll be happy to.
So T C Q doesn't throw a shoe, I'm not.
It's like, it's not who drills the well is the problem. It wasn't the problem before.
Right.
Uh, what the problem is, is they have to get it certified by T C Q, which means they have to get the cement levels right. They have to do this and that.
Right.
And all that still costs money. They could drill it for free, but we'd still have to come up with the money for all of it.
You have to do all, you know, mud it and all that. I know all about that, you know, yeah.
That's where it stands. It's not a, a license there. It's the permit in order to.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but we gotta start exploring every possibility there is out there. And desalinization is just really.
If we've got the guy here in town that's willing to work together for it.
We got information on the desalin.
We gotta have long-range plants, because, you know, we want our children and our grandchildren to have water in this community.
And not be blue.
As you're mentioning.
Exactly, and have extra ears.
Desalinization. The state of Texas has eighteen billion dollars for this drought thing set aside. They were trying to do some more reservoirs, which. They were trying to do some more reservoirs, which we were in line for two of those fairly close. They are looking into the desalinization project, but they want it regionalized because a plant the size of Miller Creek to produce the same amount of water that they produce now through their treatment plant is four billion dollars. And so, you have to look at this. If they give Abilene the money to build the desalinization plant, the city of Astromont's part of that would be is we would have to pay a third of the water line from Anson to Abilene. We would pay to pay a half of the water line from Hamlin to Manson. Then we would have to pay a hundred percent of the water line from Hamlin to here. You can't see.
Why a third from Anson to-
Because we would be sharing the water line. So there would be a third of the cost of that.
Okay, but it's a third of that line, a half of the line between Hamlin and Abilene.
We're going to, on that, Hamlin and Anson, it's gonna be us and them.
Okay, 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 I got you now.
So that would, that's a lot, because you have to look at about, I think, pipe now, four-inch pipe, which they probably wouldn't allow to set in front of the eight. Four-inch pipe is about four dollars and maybe cents a foot just for the pipe. So if you're looking sixty miles of pipeline.
Well, I agree that any of our options are expensive, but we've gotta start, we've gotta have some planning.
That's kinda where we're standing on our drought contingency plan now. So for y'all, how we move on this and what y'all think. I, we're not gonna have another meeting till after they have their meeting, and at that time, we can have some kind of, something kinda in place that we can go to or vote on, like an amendment to our drought contingency plan now that kinda makes it a little bit even out. We're gonna have to allocate different, and we're gonna have to adjust on our businesses because there's certain things happening in some businesses that we don't have control of that we can fix. So there's gonna be a lot of things we're gonna have to try to do, and we can't do it. We can do, we can do it under our current drought contingency plan, we can do it. But it's very straightforward. It's, we did a twenty-five percent decrease of what we're doing now, and that means we set our allocation at sixty-seven fifty. And then we have to adjust our businesses according to the rule of T C Q stating that we sell them seventy, or their rate is adjusted at seventy-five percent of average usage from now back. Vanessa's working on all that for me now, pulling all those numbers because they're all stored in the computer on our billing. So all we have to do is divide them by the twelve, and I'll have the number, take twenty-five percent off that. That's how much they're allocated, period. We are, it is getting into that point of animal stock. So we will have to get a certified count from, since we allocate to Swinson, South Plains, Sweet Home, Old Glory, Tri-Tri. We allocate to all of them individuals, and how we did that was their meter count times nine thousand. That's how, I think Tri-Tries was a little bit different. But we will have to get a certified count of how many residents, how many people meters they have. That would be their allocation. Anything over is just that they're watering their livestock on it over. You know, it's we adjusted that way. I don't wanna have to turn anybody's off. But in stage four, I can't even look up a new house. I can turn on existing house, but I can't actually put in a new tap.
So if somebody came in here and moved in, they couldn't have no water? That don't even make any sense that you could not do that.
You're just adding stress to your system, that's just what they're saying.
Oh, you can tell somebody that's gonna move in that they can't move into town?
You can't build a house. You can have one of those areas, you know, but you can't build, you know. That is, that don't even-
I couldn't even, at that point, I can't even lay a new water line. It means if I was in violation because of the dead end line, we needed to loop it, I couldn't do that without special consent from T C Q. Those are the stupid things. You can always ask for a variance into every plant, and that's what we would have to do. I can't just automatically do this. It has to have the variance signed, and then it can be, y'all can prove it, you know, but it has to be a variance.
Is there any precedent for this? Have you ever been in this serious drought?
Well, we have, but not in our time. I think that's the reason the well field was there is because Astromont was in that situation, was trucking, you know, trucking water in.
When is this meeting, you said, that took us to have?
May fourteenth. Is it where, in Haskell, or in Monday?
It's in Monday.
It's in Monday? Is it open meeting, I assume?
I'm sure. But this is, I've got, well, I'm only supposed to, I've got a few more in these. I was only supposed to got ours, but I got a couple other cities, and, you know, they're, I don't see how they're gonna do it either. But I'm gonna add this just because Astromont would be in a whole lot worse place on these numbers if it was not for Tri-Tri having big water leaks and our oil companies purchasing a ton of water from us during the time of planning.
I guess they, because we have all been cut off right now though, don't we?
Yeah, but our averages are based on what we used.
The historical use.
Yeah.
Also by that, so we're getting benefited.
Also we had a little cushion built in.
You have to look at some of these months that we purchased eight million gallons from them, and that was because we sold millions of gallons to Dunedin, and we sold millions of gallons to Tri-Tri for water leaks. So, you know, one bad term that happened actually cushioned us just, it didn't cushion us a little, it cushioned us quite a bit because you look at the average deal, it's one point four million gallons is all we can purchase. But during those months when the oil boom was really, and they were doing a lot of fracking and stuff, you can look on this deal and see how much it cushioned us to bring our average up. And that's all they have to base it on. They don't know where the water went, you know, that's us. But I know there was lots of big stuff about the oil field. Now, I'm glad we did that at the time, so.
Well, I think we oughta say one thing as a council to our community members is thank you very much for your conservation efforts, for being under the numbers that we're working with now. I think that everybody's doing a good job working together and watching their water, and I appreciate that.
This is, I discussed some of this with David, with the number stuff, and he was amazed, our number count and how many people was under that nine thousand. I mean, if I would've done the nine thousand, the number would've been, because we just don't have it. We don't have that many people using over nine thousand gallons, which is their allocation. So, you know, only twenty-five of those residences that we have are using over seven thousand. And I know that I adjusted three or four of those because they did have water leaks that were all the time, but that's the reason they were over seven thousand. So, you know, our city's doing great, wonderful, and you can't complain. There's not any place in, anywhere in the figures or the totals where we can complain about what we're doing. It's just we're expected to do better now. And people are doing, doing their part in this. If we allocate even more, it won't affect about twenty-five of the people that continually go over that nine thousand gallons. So, but it will help on some of the businesses, and it would help on, the count of the eleven businesses that did go over. I think a couple of those were due to, they allowed a lot of watering of livestock during that last month, which that's not a reoccurring thing all the time, but that's that.
Well, because we talked about that, when you went back and looked at the months, there was only a couple of months that was higher than the rest of the months, you know, like that.
We're doing, we're doing okay, and we'll continue. I think we can meet that if we adjust a little bit on our allocation, but not try to go down to the state level of what they're suggesting. And one of their suggestions is, is a common deal is for a household of one or two, is six thousand. You don't get nine thousand gallons until you're up to nine people in the house. I don't, nine people in the house, that, for one, that's a lot of people in one house, but nine thousand gallons to spread between them is, that's a heck of a cut, but that's what they're suggesting. Talk about number four water.
I did it.
So we're not, I don't, I don't wanna try to get us to that. I'm gonna do everything I can within the numbers to get us where we need to be. Y'all need to be prepared to answer the question of, is, yeah, we're gonna have to allocate a little deeper, and we're gonna have to ask a little more. And in those stage four, we have to not do certain things. That's just where we are. I don't have that, no choice. I just, what is that called, the barrier of bad news? Just inform them. Just wanna kinda weigh it, get some stuff together, and decide after the, May fourteenth, that'll be our next council meeting will be. I can't see. Oh, it's on February.
May twenty-first.
So I can put together a bunch of numbers. But in the meantime, what we are going to do, I say I've already talked to the operators, is we are already going to start fixing and trying to increase the mix rate of well water. And every time we adjust it, we have to adjust other things, and I'm just wanting to turn them out. But we're going to try to change the mix rate, increase the amount of well water that we're using so we don't have to pay Miller Creek any kind of overreaches. But at least we'll be starting to get into that process and that routine. So, which brings up some other issues that I'll have to discuss with you and, or y'all at another time. It's gonna bring up some other issues because of the operator situation, so. Well, there's a whole bunch of other stuff that's not on the agenda, so I guess I'll just be quiet now. I might come up to you.
I'd like to make some questions, James, in a second.
Second.
All four?
Yeah, that's my last meeting.
No, you have to be there.
You have to wait until they switch over, yeah.
I think you have to stay until it comes quick.
Well, that's like you have to get, you have to challenge, I think, you need to, you need to wait, Mark.
I can, I can, I can, I can.
You know every way to get hold of America.
Yeah, I'm gonna sit down.
Thank you.
But it was fun.
Y'all been doing that, okay?
So this is, so y'all been doing it.
Franchise tax report.